President Carter, can you talk? I think we're having some like.
Was talking.
Okay. Yes, I can hear you now. It sounds like you have a spotty connection. Is there any way you can move closer to your router? It's still, uh, I can't really understand what you're saying. It's still pretty spotty.
Could you have Alder Carter, um, call in? So keep her video on and then do call in?
Yeah, I think that's what. What's that?
I don't see it. I'm assuming she got off.
Yeah, I think it might be her connection in general, so. And I don't see, uh, Alder Abbas, who would take the reins.
He's a notified absence.
Oh, alright. Uh, so we don't have a VP then? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, uh, let's see. President Carter, can you try talking again? Looks like we're having video and audio issues here, so. Okay, so I am trying to get a phone number for President Carter right now. It looks like she keeps hopping on and off, so, um, I'm getting the impression she's having connection issues. Uh, we don't have a vice president to step in. Oh, it's like. President Carter, can you hear?
You're muted.
Okay, I've been kicked out three times, so, um.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Yeah, it's working fine now. Um.
Okay.
So I think we'll just move forward. If it kicks you off again, um, if you could, uh, email us your, uh, good num- phone number to reach you at. Um, Alder Abbas is not present, so we don't have a VP to take over. Um, I don't know what the procedural next steps are if you get kicked off. Um, we'll try to work with you on the tech end, um, if you can step up if you do get kicked off.
Okay, it is now four thirty-six, and we will call to order the PCC for Tuesday, September first. Quazy, will you take the role? Every staff, please mute yourself, and, um, members, please unmute yourselves.
Carter?
Present.
Alder Carter is present. Alder Abbas is a notified a- absence. Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney is present. Aldous Skidmore?
Here.
Aldous Skidmore is present. Alder Hennick?
Present.
Alder Hennick is present. Aldo Tierney?
Present.
Aldo Tierney is present. Aldo Campbell?
Here.
Aldo Campbell is present. Aldo Bedaw?
Here.
Aldo Bedaw is present. We have form.
Okay, thank you. Stefan, can you read the, um, meeting instructions, please?
Yep, let me share my screen here. Right, uh, welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, please activate your video and keep it on while you're s- while you are speaking. The chair, clerk, and tech facilitator are responsible for muting and unmuting. Committee members, please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, uh, panelists will be able to unmute themselves in this instance. Uh, staff, please use the raise hand feature when you're asked a question. The chair will do their best to call in committee members in the order in which hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Uh, members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will do, uh, the clerk will tell you when your time is up. Uh, after speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the committee, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Uh, President Carter, the floor is back to you.
Thank you. Um, we will go to item two, which is approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion? Please raise your hand. Alder Harrington McKinney moves. Do I have a second? Alder Skidmore? Okay, Alder Skidmore seconds. It's been moved improperly second. Is there any objection from me to record a unanimous vote? If there is, raise your hand. No one, no hands are raised, so I will record a unanimous vote for the minute's approval. Thank you. Let's go to item three, public comment. Do we have anyone registered for that? Did we?
Uh, I do not see any, anyone registered for public comment.
Okay, then we'll move to item four, uh, disclosures and recusals. Does anyone have any disclosures or recusals to mention at this time? Okay, we don't have any of those. So we will go into our presentation. That's item five, six, one, nine, six, five. And that will be presentation scheduling process and IT support for type-two BCC meeting, Sarah Edgerton.
Good evening. Um, so I was meeting with Alder, um, Kimball, and, and we were, uh, talking about a couple things, and she asked me about type-two meetings. And, um, after I shared with her what are, um, processes, she asked me to come to the CCC to share with you how this is, um, how the process works, because it seems like there might be some misconceptions on how, um, type-two meetings work. So as of, um, actually today, type-two meetings, um, if, uh, board commissioner committee has not met yet, um, they no longer need to reach out to the mayor's office to get scheduled for training. Now all they need to do is schedule training with, um, the IT media team, get themselves set up. And then from there, there is a step-by-step process, which I'm going to show you in a minute, so you can see, um, for the, um, staff of the boards, commissions, and committees as they're moving through. And then once they have completed that, then they can hold their meetings. Um, any meeting of a subcommittee or a committee meeting that is a type-two does not need to go through the mayor's office to be scheduled. They can be scheduled as, um, the calendar, um, allows them, and this calendar is for our licenses. So as we are trying to save money, we're not purchasing a whole vast amount of licenses. We have licenses set aside for the common council so that they can run their meetings, um, all of the different work groups that are out there, and then some of the subcommittees. And then for some of our larger agencies, um, such as the DPCED, which has many committees and subcommittees, they have a license. And then we have several other agencies that we have paired together because one, um, agency, for example, IT, we have one committee. Um, and then we are paired with an agency that has many because they're going to need to be able to meet more often. So we're trying to, as we're being, um, cost-effective in these licenses, um, be very thoughtful about how we have scheduled these licenses in terms of each agency and the boards and commissions and committees that they serve. Um, the Outlook calendars are out there for staff to go in, and they can look and see where, um, according to whatever license they are, uh, they have been assigned, where they then, um, can schedule the next meeting. And yes, sometimes there are going to be conflicts with that, and then at that point, they can reach out to, um, the IT, um, support for boards, commissions, and committees, and we try to figure out if there is another license that is available for them to use so that they can have their meeting. Um, it is very rare that we are not able to figure that out for the type-two meetings. So that's how the scheduling is going to work. Um, in terms of IT training and support, I'm gonna just jump over. Um, I'm gonna share my screen, and I'm gonna take you over to the, um, page that we have out on EmployeeNet for staff. So this is the virtual boards, commissions, and committees meetings. And just, just so that you know, everything that we do around boards, commissions, and committees is just a continuum. It's, you know, we are constantly changing this. It's not that this is, this is how this is going to be, and this is status quo as we get feedback from, uh, council, and we get feedback from our, uh, users as they explain to us how things are not working for them. We go in and we make new changes, or we try to address the issue that has occurred. A perfect example of that is when I was talking about the licensing and how we had that assigned. Um, so the, the first step is the training. They ha- everybody has to get trained, and we have that set up so that there are scheduled trainings every two weeks for staff. Um, it is similar to the training that all of you went through when you first did your, um, first common council meeting. Um, they are held by, uh, IT media team, and, um, you walk through and they do the training. It's a great training. I just went through mine. Um, and then you are able to host your meeting. So once they've gone through the training, then they have this step-by-step, as I was referring to, that schedule, um, the scheduling and the Outlook calendar. And then they go through and they do their Zoom meeting and send out the invitations. They notify the clerk's office. They create their meeting agenda. They create the agenda cross-reference list, and then they hold the meeting. And then how you create the minute meetings and then publish the recorded meeting. So we have each one of those steps out there. Um, one of the things I do want to point out is that IT is coming from, from one lens, one perspective. We are one puzzle piece in a overall puzzle, and that puzzle is boards, commissions, and committees. So this is just one piece of it. This is the virtual, how we run a board commission committee meeting virtually. As we move to a hybrid, then we'll change out these, these processes. Um, but for now, this is how the, the virtual. We haven't really integrated in the whole internal legislative processes as far as the agendas and minutes and how you create a, a proper agenda, how do you notice that, and then how, um, you post your minutes, and you know, how you do a legislative file. All of that is not actually incorporated into this. Our hope is, is that as this new team gets together, this piece will get incorporated into that bigger puzzle. So this is just one piece of that puzzle, but we are trying to make it so that it's very clear what this process is, because for staff, um, who are running these boards, commissions, and committees, it is, it's a little nerve-wracking as they're doing this. So just by having these steps out there, and then they can come back and look at them each time, and this is always accessible to them. They can be looking at this while they are, they are having, um, while they're running a meeting. One of the other things that, that, um, I was noting with staff today is that I think we need to have just some FAQs of what happens if, if you're having issues during the meeting. Um, and who do you reach out to? Because the whole point of the type-two meetings for, um, everybody to, to remember is that we wanted to be able to, um, provide another outlet so that we could get the rest of our boards, commissions, and committee meetings up and running. And if all of them had to come through IT, it would take us forever to get all of those meetings actually out and for us to support them. But by setting up this very, I, I will say, pretty intricate process for staff and, and providing these trainings, we're giving the ownership back to the staff of the boards, commissions, and committees so that they are able to move forward and, and run their meetings. Um, do you have any questions for me?
Sarah, it doesn't look like, oh, there's a question. Alder Kimball?
It's not a question, just, you know, great, thanks, um, for doing this, Sarah. Um, and as the TFOX implementation works on this BCC administrative support piece, um, of our recommendations, that's, that's a huge chunk of what we had intended that support team to do already. So, um, just thank you so much for that.
You're welcome. Staff did a great job. I'm very, very proud of the work. Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are gonna. Alder Foster, do you have a question?
Just a comment.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, I also wanted to say thank you to Sarah. I know this has been, um, a point of confusion for staff, and so I think having it all really laid out so cleanly and, um, you know, available for review and organized is, is super helpful, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into continuing to update the processes. And obviously, like you said, we'll continue to update them more as we go along, but this is such a great, um, kind of starting place for that work, and I think it's gonna really help the, both the staff and the BCC members of these groups really get themselves organized. So thanks for all the work on it.
You're welcome. I, I will share that with staff. Thank you.
Alder Hack?
Thank you. Uh, Sarah, I just wanted to see if there was a way that you could send this information out to Alders, and, you know, I'm constantly hampered by not being able to log on to the various City of Madison websites, because I never know my username, and I've forgotten my password. And I don't know how to get on to EmployeeNet section, so anything, any way you can guide us to what you just were showing us would be, would be great.
I, I can happily do that. No problem.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, Sarah. We're gonna move on to item six, updates. Uh, the first one, uh, Legistar six, one, nine, seven, seven would be, uh, Quazy on the common council office budget?
Yes, and we have, uh, I believe Betsy is here to kind of speak to where we.
Okay, Betsy, can you unmute yourself?
Yep, I'm here. Um, the common council twenty-twenty budget request is just a cost-to-continue budget. Um, adjustments were made to increase salaries based on steps of longevity, and of course, the Alder increases. But in the non-personnel items, it's a cost-to-continue budget, no changes from the prior year.
Okay, thank you. And does anyone have any questions, comments on that before we move on? Okay, thank you, Betsy, and thank you, Quazy. Oh, Alder Hennick, so I spoke too soon. Can you unmute yourself?
Yep, just a, a quick question. Um, what are we looking at? Um, how close are we coming into budget on this year?
Um. As of this year, you're at five hundred and three thousand in actual expenditures, so you're under budget three hundred and fifty thousand so far this year. Um, so that's year to date. According to our projection, at the second quarter, we were looking at the council coming in under budget about twenty-six thousand dollars.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, Betsy, for that.
Thanks, Betsy.
You're welcome.
And Quazy, we will move on to item seven, uh, Legistar six, oh, eight, two, three. That is an update on the president's work group on council communications tools and process. And Alder Foster, you're gonna do that update?
I sure can.
Go ahead, Alder Foster.
Great, thanks. So, uh, we're continuing to make good progress there. We only have, uh, three meetings left before our, um, time is up, so we'll be meeting, uh, tomorrow, and then again on the tenth and the seventeenth of this month. And, uh, we're finalizing a few things, uh, in addition to our final report. So one is, um, a weekly summary report that council staff has been developing that we're, we're excited to share with, uh, council after, um, our next review of it. So this will just be a, the goal is to have a weekly summary that will be shared with all Alders that highlights any kind of key uh, items that are on the meetings for the week, as well as any, um, sort of important announcements or, um, uh, significant, um, news and updates from the city. So we've been working to develop that, and we'll be excited to share that out with everybody. Um, the other thing is that we've been working on a draft social media, updates to the social media policy, as well as, um, a pilot to create, uh, official City of Madison, uh, Facebook or Twitter accounts for any Alder that is interested in, in having that. So we've got interest from a few folks, and we're, um, just finalizing a, a policy document that we'll bring to CCC for review and approval that will help us get that, um, rolling as well. Uh, and then the other item that we're working on is a, um, a draft proposal to review and update our processes around, uh, electronic public comment. So, um, looking to have an alternative to receiving thousands of, uh, emails to our Alder, uh, address, and, um, looking to put into place a, a process that would both be good for members of the public to share their thoughts with us, and then also good for members of the council, as well as BCCs, to actually be able to review that comment in kind of one place and in a nice format. So, um, we've been working on the goals around, uh, such a program, and we'll be bringing that back to this group as well.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Comments? Okay, thank you very much, Alder Foster.
Thank you.
We will, um, move on to item eight, which is Legistar six, one, nine, um, five, is it five, six? I don't have my glasses on. Eight, six. Who is gonna do the update for the TFOX final report implementation work group? Alder Kimball?
Um, yeah, there's not much of an update since the last time we met. Um, but there, uh, what, what we have been working on is this, um, uh, BCC administrative support team that I referenced when talking to Sarah, and so our fir- the first legislative proposal coming out of the TFOX implementation group is on our agenda tonight, is number ten, um, creating this, uh, BCC admin support team. And as, as to that, um, Quazy and Karen are, have developed a work plan that they'll be showing us at our next meeting, um, as to, you know, how that might roll forward, uh, when this passes, if, if and when this passes. And, you know, even if we don't formally, um, create this, I think there's been enough general understanding amongst staff and some Alders that this, that this needs to happen, that there needs to be a lot more coordinate, coordination, standardization of processes around, uh, BCC training, orientation, minutes, you know, how to do meetings. Um, and so as I said to Sarah, the work that the IT just did for, for that one little piece is, is fantastic, and is gonna make a whole world of difference to a lot of committees, I know already. So, um, that's sort of the first part of work we've done. Um, we're also working on, uh, Attorney Strange is going to give us a presentation um, about issues surrounding potential referenda and how the council would, uh, the council's options for going to referendum around the big questions of, of council structure. And he will be, um, presenting that to us at our next meeting, which is, is, I don't even know what day it is. Is it tomorrow or Thursday? It's this week sometime. Um, so if you're interested in that, please join us. Tomorrow, yeah. Please join us. Um, because this is gonna be the, I think, the heavy lift of this committee. There are also, you know, there's forty-some-odd other recommendations in, um, from the TFOX report, and we scanned them and looked at them in terms of what might have budget implications for twenty-twenty-one, and, um, are prioritizing those. Um, and, um, that's it. It's, it's been a great group to work with, and thanks to all the staff and other members who've been part of it.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding that? Okay, let's move to, um, referrals from the common council. Uh, item nine, six, oh, one, two, five is by title only. Who will be speaking on that? Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so Alder Abbas and I met and, uh, reviewed this, and, um, we've uploaded a few, um, documents to the legislative file for this item, and really wanted to just, um, provide a little bit of an update here, and, um, sort of got, get some confirmation, um, or direction from this group. So, um, really, you know, we reviewed, uh, those documents, um, state statutes, our ordinances, as well as our uh, emergency operation plan, uh, that we have adopted as a city, and, uh, feel like there's really kind of two main categories that we would recommend focusing on as it relates to this item. So one is around, um, the authority and responsibility, uh, for calling an emergency and during an emergency. And, um, that's spelled out pretty clearly in state statutes. Um, but it seems like we would be, we would benefit as a council for, from, um, a little bit of a better plan in terms of when and how to call the emergency meetings. So we're, we're authorized to call emergency meetings in our ordinances. Um, but as I think we saw with this last emergency, we were all caught a little bit flat-footed and, um, didn't really come together as a council, uh, perhaps as quickly as we could have or as frequently as we could have. So, uh, one area would be to really think about that and just, um, in a more detailed way, lay out a plan for, uh, when the next emergency happens, what our processes would be to make sure that council is getting itself together very quickly, um, and that, um, you know, per state statute, the council really should be the one that's declaring an emergency. Um, and we, we shouldn't be really just waiting around for the mayor to do that. Um, so that's sort of one area that, uh, we'd like to continue to, to look at and build some definition around. And then the other area is, you know, once we're in that emergency, what's actually the role of the council, uh, during that time, especially for an extended emergency like we sort of still find ourselves in. And, uh, there, the recommendation is to really look at that emergency operations plan, um, in which right now the council is pretty much absent in there. Um, and I think we all had a lot of experience during, um, this most recent emergency. There were a lot of questions about, well, you know, where, where are we in this org chart? What's our connection point in terms of communication, getting updates about what's happening? Uh, what about decision-making for policy-related items that are occurring during this? And, um, most of the organization of the Emergency Operations Center is defined in this document, and again, common council is largely absent. is defined in this document and again, Common Council is largely absent. Um, so our recommend, recommendation there is to review that document and to consider adding more specific guidance, both for Common Council staff as well as the Common Council, um, and the Com- Common Council leadership in terms of more specific roles that, uh, we should be playing during an emergency. So that's sort of where we're at right now and just wanted to share that out here, um, you know, get any input from folks on CCC. And then, you know, we're willing to continue to work on it, just sort of as is. Uh, we'd also love, um, anybody else to join in that effort. Um, I think it's an important topic and having more than the two of us would be helpful. Um, and then also just wanted to, and we can sort of do that informally, um, or it might be worth, um, formalizing it a little bit more and having a, an actual work group to, to take this on. Um, so those are sort of the questions that we wanted to bring here.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for Alder Foster or Alder Kimball?
So on our agenda today, it says the recommended action of this legislative item is to place on file without prejudice. Is that your recommendation and, and Alder Abbas's recommendation?
No, yeah, I'm not sure where that came from, but no, I, I I would recommend, I mean, we could certainly do that with this item as it's by, um, title only and there's no specific action there, but I think, uh, the, the work itself, um, we'd like to see continued. So I, I guess not necessarily opposed to placing this legislative item on file, um. But would like to know the, the will of the body in terms of what we do with, with the topic and with the work itself, because I think there's, uh, there's important work that needs to be done here.
Thank you, um, I think the
There's other comments, just so you know, go ahead.
I can yield to other people, I'll yield.
Okay, Alder Henick? Go ahead.
Yes, I was just gonna ask Alder, Alder Foster or Alder Kimball on this one. Um, looking at it, it looks like I, I would completely agree that, that it's a topic that we should be looking at and, um, coming up with a bit more structure around how we handle emergencies, especially long-term ones like we're in right now. Um, and kind of the, the progress through emergencies of at what time points, you know, it's, it's considered, we need to be looking at what structures in order to, um, really be addressing the needs of the city. Um, one question I have, you, you mentioned a work group. What are, what are some other ways to move forward with this item and, and continue to make progress?
Alder Foster, what is your desire on that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think regardless of the structure of it, I think it's gonna require, you know, three to five people to do this work and come back with a more detailed and specific proposal, including potential updates to that, um, to that document as well as, you know, potentially any, um, updates to our ordinances. So, I mean, I think having, we've already identified a few questions for the attorney's office. It basically held off on, um, reaching out there because we wanted to give this update here. Um, so it's, it will require some staff support to do the work. And, you know, again, I think it'd be better if it's a, a few more people. If it's just the two of us, it's, you know, we're certainly willing to continue to do it, but I think it would be beneficial to have a few more voices in that, in that work. So, you know, again, we, we could, if there are others that are interested and we just wanna, you know, work together and there's no, um, you know, quorum issues or anything, we could do that informally and continue to work on it. Um, but also just given the importance of it, I think it would also make sense to consider formalizing it, um, yeah.
Alder Henick, is that, do you have more questions? Cause I wanna ask, uh, Alder Foster one.
I was just gonna follow up that I, I think it's helpful to formalize it because I, I think it also is very helpful for them to have the emails go out. I know I really appreciate it, um, having emails come out for different work groups so that if you are able to attend those, that you can attend them. And, and I think it's helpful to have, um, even if alders aren't on the work group, for them to be able to, um, come to a meeting or two, uh, to be able to really look at that and, and see how the, the work group is addressing issues. Um, so I, I do like it when work groups are formalized so that people can look and see what work groups are going on and even constituents have a much better, um, avenue of looking at what the city is really addressing and what work is going on in the city. So I would, I would support that.
Thank you, Alder Henick. Alder Foster, I'm more than happy to, to create a task force. If you're willing to work on it, continue to work on it. And then I'll send it out to see who else wants to work on it. You can just send me back, uh, email. Alder Henick, you have your hand up? Do you wanna follow up? Okay, Alder Kimball, do you, can you unmute yourself?
Yep. Um, thank you, and I heard Alder Foster, uh, say an Alder Work Group and I heard you, President Carter, say a task force.
Oh, I didn't hear him say Alder Work Group.
I think the intention was it for, to be alders working on it? Is that right, Alder Foster?
Yeah, I, I think this is an item, I don't think we need to be recruiting non-alders for it, but, so yeah, I, I would, I would agree with that. And maybe that's what President Carter, you had in mind anyway, I don't
That's what I had in mind, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. I guess, um, with that commitment, I will go ahead and make the motion to place this item on file without prejudice.
Do we have a second? Alder Henick?
Second.
I have, it has been moved in second it, second. Are there any objections to recording this as a unanimous vote? Since there are no objections, we will record this as a unanimous vote. Thank you. Let's go on to item ten. And, uh, creating an administrative service team to support and enhance board, commission, committee, staffing, training. Uh, Legisstar six one five four one, and who's gonna be speaking on this? Alder Kimball?
Uh, I can, although there are, um, three other members of the TFOG's Implementation Committee here, Alders Tierney, Furman, and Foster, who can also speak to this. Um, but like I said, this is the first product of the TFOG's Implementation Work Group. This creates an administrative services ta-, uh, staff team to support BCCs. Um, the team consists of people, staff in the city who already are supporting BCCs, uh, including, um, staff in the mayor's office, the, um, from IT, the city attorneys, the clerks and the council, um. The resolution says this, the team shall meet one hour per week to work on and address issues related to resident engagement um, identified in the resolution and that they will, um, begin the, uh, organization of, um, organization of support structures and, and training mechanisms, um, to, to, I bas-, basically to standardize those things and will do the background work as, um, as we, the, the council looks deeper into reorganizing boards, commissions, and committees, which are some major recommendations from TFOG's. They will help us, um, do the administrative and background work for that, including, um, helping to administer self-ass-, uh, board, commission, committee self-assessments so we can have a baseline of data from, um, from a already existing boards, commissions, and committees. So that's what this resolution does. Um, it was a priority for the TFOG's, um, task force and I hope, um, you'll see it's important and, and, and support it.
Okay, thank you, Alder Foster. If you can unmute yourself.
Yep, thank you. And it looks like, uh, Alder Abbas also just joined, so we don't have a full complement here, uh, um, for this. I just wanted to speak in support of it as well, um, you know, being someone that attended a lot of the, uh, TFOG's discussions, it's hard for me to, um, to know what the, what the perspective is from those that have, are, are, have just read the report, but I can, I can share that this broad topic, the functioning of our boards, committees, and commissions was, uh, just such a, a major component of the TFOG's work and so many of the, the recommendations really revolve um, and hinge on our ability to better organize and standardize ourselves, um, around this work. So, um, I think it's not a surprise that the TFOG's Implementation Group is recommending this as, uh, the first priority action. And, uh, I'm, I'm really, uh, excited about the possibility of making some improvements here. I think it's, it's really needed, both for ourselves as alders, um, and on behalf of other board committee, commission members. Uh, I think on behalf of city staff, um, both those that actually staff the committees as well as those who regularly attend and present. Um, we heard a lot in the TFOG's group about some of the issues that they run into uh, and also for members of the public and just improving access and transparency around, around this work. So, um, I think this is really critical and would encourage everybody to support it. Thanks.
And, uh, okay, Alder Foster, I have a question for you. Um, in creating this service, administrative service team, have we looked into staff capacity and the budget for this?
The, the intent is to use existing staff and to keep it manageable for something that they can do within their existing roles. Um, so it's largely going to be people that are already, um, focused on this work in one way or the other. So it will require some additional, um, support from council staff in particular. Um, and then the other individuals, you know, from the mayor's office and the clerk's office in particular, um, as well as some support from, um, IT, just to make sure that we have the right, uh, people that are coordinating efforts. Uh, the goal is not to, um, create any new budgetary expense for this work basically managed with our existing resources.
And, and what is the timeline? Do we have a timeline for this?
Uh, at our next meeting, we're gonna be reviewing a, um, kind of high-level project plan draft that's, uh, being worked on. So I think that'll, that'll give us a better sense of timeline, um. In all reality, the, the, the recommendation from TFOG's, um, I think envisioned this not really as a temporary kind of thing, but, um, something that, that we need to invest in long-term. So, you know, it may change its shape and maybe it, it, um, you know, it looks different in the future. There was, you know, also a proposal that did require, um, uh, more of a budgetary investment, um, also related to resident engagement, that there's a possibility that these things could be connected in the future. Um, but at this stage, the recommendation is really just to use existing staff and to kind of get the work started. Um, but again, I, I think, I think long-term, the need for oversight and, and, um, just overall management of our board committee, commission structure is going to be needed in the future. And so I, I think this is something we should be expecting as kind of a long-term, um, investment.
And are we, are you looking at, um, okay, so when I said timeline, I meant are we looking at launching this in two thousand twenty-one?
Yeah, I think
That's what I meant, but not necessarily, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think the goal is to really get the work going ASAP. Um, I think especially with our, you know, shifts to virtual meetings and as we saw tonight, the really good presentation from Sarah. There's so many changes that we have experiences and so many places for things to go sideways that, um, you know, yeah, this, the reason that we're, we put this forward as our first recommendation is because of the, the urgency behind it. So I think the goal would be to get, get going ASAP.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, thank you very much, Alder Foster.
One quick question?
Yep.
I'm sure. Um, so Alder Foster, one question is just to, um, I'm not saying an, an end date, but is there a way that we could put some timelines for deliberables in or, or some ideas of check-in points that alders would look to, to say, you know, just an, an update or a, a check-in to say, we're looking to have some recommendations on, you know, size or structure on such-and-such dates or, or something like that?
Yeah, I think that's definitely the, the goal. So again, the, you know, first draft of the kind of, it's not even really a project plan at this point, it's really just a high level, you know, here are kind of the, the goals that we would start working on, um, that's what we'll be reviewing this week. But I think the expectation is that that's a living document and that as we go along, it gets, um, more detailed and refined and we really start setting, uh, goals that have dates on them in terms of what we're trying to accomplish.
Alder Foster, would it be fair to have you do another update in October then?
Yeah, I, I'm certainly happy to, uh, Vice President Abbas is chair of, of the group and so he may also wanna, um,
Or, uh, or, uh, Vice President Abbas, yeah. I, is October too soon? I'm, I was just trying to get an idea on when we could do another update. You can unmute yourself?
If I may speak, um, I think just having it as we've been having it as a standing update item on CCEC agendas for TFOG's Implementation Committee is, is good.
What do you think, Alder Abbas?
It sounds good.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Is there anything else? I can't believe we're done at five eighteen.
Yeah, just wait for Common Council meeting.
Well, yes. Yes, indeed, Alder Henick?
Move adjournment?
And do we have a second?
Correct, I have checked. We didn't vote on the last item.
So we didn't.
Item ten?
I raise my hand to, uh, move adoption.
Are there any objection? Ald, Alder Henick, you have your hand up?
No, I was just seconding.
Okay.
It, it already got seconded, so.
Are there any, um, are there any objections to recording this as a unanimous vote? Please raise your hand. There are no hands raised. I will record this as a unanimous vote. Thank you. And then I will go back to, it's been moved in second and for adjournment. And I will, I believe there will not be any objections to that. But I'll wait and see.
That's what, I just need, um, hang on a second. I know Alder Henick made the motion, I, I didn't catch the second.
You can add my name as second.
Okay.
Okay, I will, uh, it's a unanimous, thank you guys, meeting's adjourned. We will see you at six thirty. I'll see where that's.